Take the call to order, the August 11th Planning Board meeting, and ask you all to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of prayer.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
We have met a quorum tonight with eight members present. Ask for a motion to approve or change the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask for an amendment to the agenda, Ben Woody, the Planning Director, is the staff person for Item A, PB 1511 David Knock. He's actually on his way back from Raleigh. He's not sure that he'll be here in time, but to give him a fighting chance, he's asked that we move that item to the last item on the agenda.
All right. Do we have a board member that will make a motion regarding the change of the agenda, moving Item PB 1511, to put it last on our new business tonight?
So moved.
All right, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the agenda's modified. Do we have any disqualifications tonight? In accordance with the State Government Ethics Act, it's the duty of every Planning Board member to avoid conflicts of interest. Does any Planning Board member have any known conflict of interest with respect to any matters coming before the Planning Board today? If so, please identify the conflict and refrain from any participation in the particular matter involved. No disqualifications. All right. Ask for a motion to adopt the minutes from the previous meeting?
So moved.
Be the July 14th, 2015. We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, minutes are adopted of the July 14th, 2015 Planning Board meeting. We have no old business. First item on our new business is PB 1307, University Park. That's Elan Vacations, Phase Two. Request for preliminary plat, a use permit approval for 39 town home lots within existing plan development, within existing plan development. Since this is a use permit, do we, all right, anyone planning to speak for or against this project in any way, please come forward. Ask that you put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
All right, thank you. All right, PB 1307, University Park. Ms. Tammy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to orient you, down near the end, there goes my mouse, down near the end of the county, Elan Vacations office building was just built. I'm sure you recognize that, that very beautiful building right at the highway. And this is not a change in the request that you approved a master plan for plan development for previously. It's still the same number of dwelling units, still in basically the same location as proposed before, but it is a change in process. Previously, this was approved for these multifamily units to be all on one lot. And now, the idea is to subdivide the units out, kind of like a condo concept where your lot is actually beneath your dwelling unit. So that process is, does trigger the subdivision, preliminary plat, and use permit approval that you were reviewing tonight. The applicant is proposing the seven buildings that will house the 39 units. You will see the staff findings of fact in your case analysis. I won't read those for you now, but if you have any questions on those, feel free to let me know. The Technical Review Committee has reviewed this and recommends approval. And I'm gonna go through some of the items with you. Might be easier to do it this way. In your packet, you're gonna see several items that I'm going to skip. And that's because they've been addressed. I have updated the PowerPoint presentation, but your packets were not able to be updated in time, unfortunately. We have received the ARHS septic evaluation, so you can check that off. There's some outstanding items for Phase One that must be completed prior to Phase Two. And that would be the correction of the Carritoke Highway address through recombination or some other method that they're working on. There are some outstanding shrubs that haven't been planted in Phase One. The other thing that the board may wish to consider also, the original amenities package that you approved for this development included a tennis court and a basketball court. This version replaces those with a playground and a picnic area, or picnic table. And that may not be the same intensity that was previously desired by the board. The streets will need to be labeled as private or public. This is an engineer's requirement that more information is needed regarding the sewer treatment system. They're in the process of working on that. I know Victor, the engineer, has been in contact with them today. The stormwater runoff item that you see there is also being worked on with the engineer, as well as the sufficient volume of water for the, meeting the ISO standards. I know that Victor's been in contact with the Fire Marshal as well regarding those issues. There are some other plat corrections that I've noted in your packet that probably have all been taken care of by this supplemental, yes. So you can ignore those as well. So we are recommending approval of the request, subject to those few outstanding items being addressed. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. And this, I wanted to show you, is an elevation of what these buildings will look like. They do have to meet the multifamily standards in our ordinance. So you can see they have the porches, or stoops, as I used to call them. They have dormers. They've got the windows predominantly in the front, and other little touches and little details that'll make those an attractive set of buildings.
So the main difference we're looking at, I guess, before the entire project was common ownership, and now it's a zero lot line development, basically.
Basically, it is, yes.
All right, any questions for staff? All right, then I'll ask the applicant to come up and present your case. If you will give us your name and address.
Good evening. Excuse me, good evening. My name is Victor White with Landmark Engineering. I am the engineer for this project. Live at 33 11th Avenue in Southern Shores. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. Just a brief rundown is, the reason that we are coming back for the subdivision is when we had, originally, we were going for Phase Two as a site plan. And with comments from the building inspector, with the requirements for, basically sprinkler requirements, and also, when we were here before for the master plan, it was stated that, you know, these were gonna be both long-term and short-term rentals for overflow, for golf packages, that sort of thing. Well, according to the North Carolina Building Code, anything under 30 days is considered transient, and it puts you into a whole different level of sprinkler protection.
Is this just for multifamily?
This is for...
That you're referring to?
Yes, it's a combination of multifamily, but also the use as far as the length of a rental. So, one of the things that was actually suggested and brought to our attention is, if we were to come back with the subdivision and do this as a zero lot line development, that eliminated that, and that's basically why we're here.
Understand.
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I think, just clarify that, it's making it where it's set up less like a hotel and more like individual ownership.
That's correct.
Just so we know that's...
That, you know...
Because we had a case recently to where some of the same verbiage came up, so I'm sure all of us right now are tying that in our head, how does that all relate?
Yeah.
But if it's set up for individual ownership...
It's set, the, my client's intention right now, it gives him the option down the road, if there's a demand for it, that these could be sold to prospective buyers.
All right, now, the outstanding items, the Carritoke Highway address, can you give us an update on progress of that? Because apparently, it's a life safety issue to where we need Carritoke Highway address.
That is something that we're working on. I know I'd probably need to talk to Harry Lee himself with the GIS. I know that Norman had had an abandoned vehicle in his Phase One part, and had called the police department, and they actually had the, the address is 8648. But it has to do with access, whether it's gonna be a right-of-way or an easement, has to do if we can access the parcel from another entrance, which we're, we don't wanna have to put in right now because we're not sure with the commercial frontage, what that's, where that would be located. And the Board of Commissioners had blocked off the access to Mobile Road. So that's one of the things that we're trying to work on. And honestly, I probably need to approach Harry directly to rectify that and...
And figure out how you can be assigned a Carritoke address.
Yeah, and that's really the main thing because my client is in property management and rentals. It's, you know, it's really helpful to have that Carritoke Highway address for the tourists that are coming in to try to find a, try to find a business.
Tammy, is this more of a technical-type issue or a layout issue?
I think it's more of a layout issue. Harry Lee has already reviewed it and the way it's laid out now. Because it has a road that goes, what is it called? Is it Stafford Lane?
No, Fordham.
Okay, because Fordham Road, oh, you're not gonna be able to see it. Fordham Road comes in off the highway, and then the office is accessed off of Fordham Road and does not have an access on the Carritoke Highway. He's not allowed to give it a Carritoke Highway address using the 911 assignment, address assignment regulations that he has to follow. Since it's coming in off of the separate road, its address is actually on that new road.
And what is the 911 issue with the current address?
I have an email from, that Harry forwarded me, that said, if you dial 911 from that building, it's not gonna come up as a Carritoke Highway address because 911 gets their addresses from, well, Harry, basically, from IT and GIS. And that's who feeds the addresses to 911. That's who feed the addresses to say, "You're Garmin." He updates those folks regularly. So when you put in that Carritoke address, it's not there because it hasn't been assigned. It's the street that comes in that the office then accesses.
And I think that's one of the things where I need to talk to Harry directly. Because like I said, when there was an abandoned vehicle there, Norman had asked the, I don't know if it was the sheriff...
I asked the deputy who came to the premises, and I said to him, by the way, I said, "What is the address that came up on your computer?" And he looked at it, and I saw it on his computer. It said 8648 Carritoke Highway. And we also use that on our literature that we've been sending out, you know, for people checking in. And we had a couple of guests this weekend who said the 8648 brought him directly to our office. It's working, regardless of what Harry Lee has in his GIS system.
Okay, and what's the issue with having a driveway off of Carritoke? Is, is this where the office sits now has got Carritoke frontage, correct?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So you're not sacrificing a lot or anything?
I don't understand what you mean by what's the issue.
Is, is there not currently a driveway now off of Carritoke Highway to this office space?
It's really, it's considered...
It's at Fordham Drive.
It's considered Fordham Drive. And that's one of the things we're talking with Harry is, is this gonna be changed to a drive with an easement to that? One of the questions that I had in talking to Harry is, from reading it, he, it made it sound like we couldn't access the Phase Two if that was just an easement. And I'm not, I just need to talk to him to find out if, to get a clarification on that. It would seem that, you know, if you had an easement to access another property, which is done often, and then the, you know, the Fordham Drive could stop, you know, further back from where the future road would join in. So that's, I think it's, you know, it's a logistical thing on that. And I really, I don't know, because I need to speak to Harry personally. Now, Tammy's been very helpful in trying to deal with this, but I'd need to try to have a sit-down with Harry and see what we can do about this.
Is it not within the realm of possibility just to put a driveway from the buildings down to the Carritoke Highway?
No.
There isn't, you can't do it. I mean, if you've been by our building, you know, the way that it's set up, you know, we have the septic system that goes along there, and then we've got that, like, retention pond, I guess you would call it.
Infiltration basin. And it's also, you know, a matter of the county ordinance. You can only have, if you're on the same property, you can only have accesses, you know, there's a minimum spacing between the accesses.
Mm-hmm.
So I think that's one of the issues also.
Okay. The eight shrubs in Phase One, that's...
That's, and really, and we had talked about that. We were ready, when we had gone through, this stuff would, I guess, had originally been shown as to be taken care of by final plat. Well, final plat, you have to have your infrastructure in. The whole reason that we haven't put those remaining shrubs in there is because that road is gonna be extended. You're gonna be putting water line and other utilities in there. And it's just, and also, the infiltration basin's gonna be expanded. So there was really a desire not to put them in because you just end up tearing them out.
You don't wanna put them in and tear them out.
Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, we actually, and I have some pictures, where we put in shrubs on the east side of the building that weren't required, because that's the side that faces...
Tammy, the shrubs that are missing, are they where future infrastructure is on the plant?
I'm not sure, because part of the shrubs were installed. So I don't know if the ones that were installed are not in, and the, I'm not sure.
Well, couldn't we still have the same number installed in a different place so that they technically meet the...
They wouldn't meet the ordinance, because what those are designed for is that area that is the warehouse. Now, he could bond them. He bonded them previously. That bond could be renewed.
Okay.
And it's a very minor bond, and it's not, it's not an issue.
It's not something that I don't wanna do, but I don't wanna plant them.
Right, it's not something I wanna belabor. I mean, I understand you don't wanna put them in and tear them out, but we also have conditions that are not met before we can move to another phase, so we're talking through it.
Yes, sir.
Well, if you see the picture of the east side of the building, you'll see all the plants along that side. That's the side that you actually face. The other picture shows you where the road ends, and then the back of the warehouse, where we have four plants there. But the road doesn't even get that far. So it's not like you're looking at. I mean, we put them, I wasn't even required to put in those 15 or 20 plants that I put in, but I did it because I wanted to look nice aesthetically. I mean, if you look at our building, you know, it's probably one of the nicest buildings in Lower Carritoke. It is the nicest building.
There you go.
I have a question for you, related to the shrubs. What do you think the cost of these eight shrubs would be?
$215.
If that would satisfy the county's desire to have those eight shrubs planted...
I'll write you a check now.
That would seem to be a logical thing to do for the small expense that it is, even though you may have to remove it later. At least you satisfy the conditions of what was already supposed to have been happening.
And a performance bond does basically the same thing. It's just the cost plus 15%.
Yeah, and I've already supplied Tammy and Ben with the quote on that, so, you know, we're all in agreement on it.
Okay, so that part is in process. What about Item C, removal of the Carritoke Highway driveway for the farm market? Apparently, there's some spacing standards.
There's a little bit of confusion on that. It's been removed, okay? It was done yesterday. But it wasn't, the design was not for the farm market. What I've done over there is I have put two porta-johns, a big flat banner on them that says, "Courtesy of Elan Vacations." And basically, what people do is, they've got no place to go. There's no rest areas.
I understand.
I pay for this out of my own pocket.
My dad has them pull over his parking lot and go behind the dumpster.
Oh, yeah. No, no one has asked me to do this. I'm just doing it myself. And I mean, these are just pictures of just a number of people using it. You can see the traffic. It's dead stop. And what happens is, where I have them positioned, when they're coming down the road, some people see them right away, and they're actually running down the highway. Other people don't see them until they pass Fordham Drive, and then they panic, "How do I get in there?" It was an existing curb, I guess, and all we did was put some millings on it to make it safer. The people were turning in off the highway and then coming back out through the Fordham Drive exit.
But that's gone now.
Yeah. Tammy, did Jason get a picture of that?
He did. He sent it this afternoon. I haven't had an opportunity to talk to him yet.
I saw it when I was driving up here, and...
But it was, you know, it was done more as a courtesy for the tourists.
I understand, and I understand the need for it, too. But it's, if there's spacing standards, you know, one thing we, on this board, try to look at is in black and white, is it right? Because if we get into opinions, then we're political, and we're not.
Right.
Black and white, there was some spacing issues there, so it had to go as one of these conditions that we're talking through now.
Right.
I understand. I mean, I've seen them pull over on the side of roads. They're standing in the middle of a field.
Right.
I live at the mid-county area in Idlet, so when I go south, I see the circus.
Yeah.
And like I said, my dad, we've got a storage facility there in Poplar Branch, and he's got security cameras, and I can't tell you the stuff that we've seen on those. So certainly understand that, but we're talking through...
Right, I mean, it wasn't done to break the law or to, you know, violate any rules. It was done as a courtesy, you know, for the tourists.
And I think that when originally, this stuff was shown, and we thought it needed to be taken care of by final plat, so after I talked to Tammy, and they said it was more of a concern, that's when we went ahead and got that removed. Now, they can still access that from Fordham Drive to be able to, you know, use that service.
I think that's what you call an unintended consequence.
Yes.
Of trying to help people out, and it backfired on you.
No, it's taken care of now.
Yeah.
Okay. Number three, the recreation. When we looked at this before, I think one of the things we really liked about the project were the amenities, the recreational-type amenities, the tennis court, the basketball court. And those being replaced with a picnic area and a playground does seem like a step backwards from the amenities, which were considered with the previous approval. My opinion on it, and everyone's gonna have their own, but mine, I like the idea of a playground. When I travel, my kids get excited when they see a playground. So I wouldn't take that out. But I would think you need one or the other tennis court or basketball court, one or the other, because that's what we were talking about before.
Well, one of the things that I intend to do is, I've been talking with the golf courses. I mean, the intent of this project, okay, is basically to provide affordable housing for the worker bees down here. That's what it's really all about. Yeah, I am gonna have some that I will probably use as short-term rentals, maybe for overflow during the summer or for golf packages. But what I intend to do is work with Kilmarlik over there. And they have a program where, I think it's $200 for a year. And people can go there, get reduced green fees, and use their facilities. So, you know, why should I duplicate something that I can get at Kilmarlik? I'd rather put something on the premises that Kilmarlik doesn't have. And I'd like to find out as well from the tenants, because basically, when this was approved, I could build 18 units before I had to, once I started the 19th, I had to bring in the amenities. I'd like to get a feel from the people who are living there, what they'd like. You know, if none of these people wanna play tennis, then why put in a tennis court? If people wanna play basketball, okay. You know, that's a totally different thing. But it just makes more sense in my mind to find out what the people want before I go ahead and put it in. I'm putting in a swimming pool. Yeah, I'm gonna have a clubhouse. We talked about a playground. Let's see what the people want.
So can't we leave it as is? And then, after you get the 18th, you put in an amendment to change it at that point?
Leave it.
As the original, you know, tennis court, basketball, and then, before you have to actually go through with building it, put in your application to amend it then?
How does that work, Tammy, as far as adjusting the site plan in process? And then you'd have, you know, some evidence that this is what the tenants have asked for, and that's perfectly logical.
Right.
I mean, we don't wanna strong-arm you into putting in something useless. I mean, my observation is tennis courts are hardly ever used.
Exactly.
The county high school has a great one, and you rarely ever see anybody there.
Right.
Basketball courts are usually used, playgrounds are used.
Right.
But when you get folks living there, see what they're asking for and come back there.
And that's my point. That's my point. I don't even know the mix of people that I'm gonna get in there. I mean, the design of it is gonna be where you don't even see it from the highway. I mean, the trees are gonna...
Well, what we're talking about tonight, though, is we'll approve or disapprove. If it's approved, it carries forward with what you've committed to as of tonight. So, as of tonight, what are we committing to? Are we committing to tennis court and basketball court? Are we committing to playground and basketball, picnic and playground? What are we committing to tonight?
Let's do playground and basketball.
Okay.
I think that's reasonable, because Kilmarlik is just down the road, and for people that wanna play tennis, that would be available for them.
All right. Number four, we saw the elevations.
Number five has been corrected.
Number five's good?
If you're reading about the sad parking, yes.
All right, the sewage treatment, we've heard that that's being addressed already. Is that correct, Tammy?
I know Victor was working with Eric.
I have talked with Eric, and I told him about, you know, he's familiar with the type of system we're proposing, the tertiary levels, so he was fine with that. The one thing that he was... The one thing that he was, had talked about is, in his comments, he was saying that he understood, the way he understood it was, the phase one, his business had to be also upgraded to tertiary. And I told him that I didn't think that that was the case. And I had, actually, I'd looked through the minutes, both of the planning board and the board of commissioners. I didn't see anything, but I actually got on the archive and looked at the video of the board of commissioners meeting, and Ben specifically had talked about the first phase. Until you get to three thousand, you could do a conventional. And I had called and left a message with Eric, and I have not heard back from him. So, and Eric had told, basically told me that he was just looking for, you know, if I was right, if I could provide him that, and he would be fine with it. So I just have not heard back from him to confirm that.
Okay. And the fire flow?
The fire flow should not be an issue, because we're required to have separation between each of the units as part of that. So when you do the ISO calculations, even with a wood frame construction, it's below that. I'm just, the way you do that is, for two-story buildings, you use the largest, I guess, I'm not, the largest area that's undivided or unpartitioned, I think it is.
It's some partitioned, and they're looking for legal fire break partitions, I think.
Exactly. And then the second floor, you use fifty percent of the largest unpartitioned area. It's not an issue with, if you use that whole unit above. I just have not provided calculations, because looking at the building plans, it might actually be smaller than that. But I've talked, you know, with Pat Irwin. We're, you know, we know what we have flow-wise at that hydrant right there, so that shouldn't be an issue. And that's something that's gonna be required with the building permit anyway.
But these are wood frame buildings, and it looks like the fire flow is gonna be sufficient for, okay. Any questions?
I have one comment that you made, sir. You're saying that these are afford, a lot of them are, you're thinking they're going to be affordable housing for worker bees, I believe was your term? Can you explain what you mean by affordable housing? And are they houses for purchase or houses for rent?
No, they're for rent.
Okay.
Okay. And, you know, I mean, basically, people, you've got firemen, teachers, policemen, you know, people who work. I mean, these are not gonna be.
I understand worker bees, excuse me. The question is affordable.
Well, affordable, are you asking me how much I think?
About what you think the rent would be?
Probably around thirteen hundred is what I'm thinking. And that's gonna be for a three-bedroom, approximately fourteen hundred and fifty square feet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
At the south end with amenities.
Are they all three-bedroom, or are there different layouts?
No, they're all three-bedroom.
Has there been discussion about switching from wooden studs to steel studs in order to increase your fire flow capacity?
That is something that I guess would be more of an architect's question, but that did come up when we were working on the warehouse as far as the, you know, the metal frame. But this, you know, one of the things to remember is, in order for these to be, for him to keep the rent as far as, to serve the market for the firemen and teachers and, you know, young families that are getting started. I do know that, you know, the metal frame, while it puts you into a lower fire flow requirement as per the ISO, it does increase significantly the cost.
Typically, you do that if you have to.
Yes.
If you're not gonna meet the, which that'd be when you do your calculations and send it on for permit.
Exactly.
It gives you an option if you can't meet it with where you are now. They basically look the same, but they cost more.
Yeah. Well, and that, you know, that is something that, you know, and this is more of the architect's area. But, you know, you have to have that partition, non-combustible assembly between the units, and it has to extend all the way up. I mean, that's.
All the way through the roof.
Yeah. Yeah, that's required in order to get that partition as far as your area reduction.
Are these units gonna be, I'm sorry, John.
Well, this is kind of a side topic. If any of these units sell in the future, do they fall into sort of an HOA concept? Are they just gonna be independently owned, town owns inside of a master?
Well, it would have to be. If he, one of the things I think in talking with attorney and with, if it, if they, if it gets to the point where he wants to sell them, then he's gonna have to set up a homeowners association or a property owners association or something like that. Until those, until he actually decides if he wants to, you know, sell those, that's, it's not required. But that would be something.
That's not the main interest, that's sort of a Plan C or D, right? Have to sell.
Put it this way, for me, I have no intention of selling them. But what happens when I go? Who knows?
I mean, maybe sell his blocks or.
Yeah, but I mean, while I have control of it, my intention is to keep them as rentals.
Tammy, is there anything in the UDO and the multifamily development that requires covenants and bylaws and things to that effect?
Not in the multifamily, but in the subdivision section, when they come for a final plat, they'll have to have restrictive covenants laid out.
Okay, so you'll have to have that set up, but you would be the developer, the declarant, the board, and everything until?
Yeah, we're kind of in a gray area here too, because, I mean, you know, we came originally as a PUD, and now we're a subdivision, and, you know, we're kind of in the middle. So we're coming under two sets of rules and regulations, which is kind of confusing.
It is. I mean, tonight, though, we're looking at switching over to a zero-lot line subdivision.
Within a planned development.
Within a planned development.
That's what I'm saying.
So it would be wise to have that in place anyway. I mean, any of us could get smacked by a bus tomorrow, and there's thirty-nine units out there, and the first person that buys one is gonna wanna know that there's some covenants in place, but.
Well, and to be honest, there are also gonna be covenants required as part of the wastewater permit from.
Right, for the management agreement for that?
Yes.
Right. Any other questions for the applicant?
I have an observation in regards to the addressing of the property. I believe after a given period of time, the folks that have to put in Fordham Drive will get there. It may not happen immediately if you were to have to make all of these addresses Fordham Drive instead of Carritoke Highway like your intention was initially, but they'll get there. And you guys have a good reputation in the county as far as your business, and I'm sure you have recurring customers, and they'll know where to go. As far as, as far as the addressing goes, I understand what you're thinking is you would love to have a Carritoke Highway address, because it's more readily visible. That's the road they're coming down on. But ultimately, if you have to make those addresses, Fordham Drive, it's not a real issue. They'll get there.
Who has jurisdiction over that, Tammy?
It is basically Harry, but he's using a nine-one-one addressing system.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So you're working with Harry?
Yes.
And Harry's the man?
Yeah.
And he's gonna say if that needs to be?
Well, and that's, and I've talked to, Tammy and I have had discussions, but to be quite honest, I've emailed Harry in the past, but I just need to make a visit and talk to him and see, you know, what can be worked out.
Okay. All right.
I'll add, the building looks good, though, because it's off the highway, and it has that turn, and it has a little bit of a buffer in front of it. But I think in some ways, that's a good thing, even though you're not actually coming off Carritoke to get into it. I mean, for all practical reasons and purposes, yes, you are, you know?
Well, for safety, it's far preferable to pull in a side street than in and out of a parking lot on Carritoke. So, I mean, I understand the concept. Get with Harry? I mean, we're not the authority on nine-one-one addresses, but it's an issue that needs to be resolved.
Yes, sir.
Questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I've got Norman Bebe?
Bebo.
Oh, Bebo, okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
I did not have anyone else signed up or sworn in for this item. Does anyone else want to speak to it? Okay, close the public hearing and discussion among the board.
It's my opinion that it makes sense that either one or two things happens as far as the shrubs go. Either pay it in or go ahead and put them in and remove it later at the time that you have to in order to have the utilities and the other infrastructure in. The applicant stated that the cost of those shrubs was two hundred and fifteen dollars. That doesn't seem like a huge expense if they had to plant them in order to satisfy the requirement. And it actually would be cheaper if you don't have to do the additional fifteen percent upon it in order to pay in the cash.
Well, when you move them, you might be able to save them too.
Yeah. And many times, you can plant something as a root ball, more or less, and you can pull it right back out of the hole six months later.
Leave the cloth on it.
And also, when it comes to the Carritoke Highway address issue, as I stated to the applicant, ultimately, visitors who come to them will find their destination, whether it be a Carritoke Highway address or a Fordham Road or Drive address. They'll eventually get there, and I understand what they're talking about. They want to have the name recognition of Carritoke Highway or Highway one fifty-eight, but ultimately, it's about safety.
Yeah, we'd probably be going the wrong direction to require a Carritoke driveway, in my opinion.
Correct.
The driveway at the farm market's gone. We're looking at playground and basketball court as of tonight.
I agree with you a hundred percent about the tennis courts not being used. That is more of a sport that doesn't seem to have the popularity that it did some years ago. Basketball is a popular sport of all ages. So I think that's a good decision there, to remove the tennis court and have playground and basketball court.
All right. Any other discussion or questions?
Well, it just sounds like to me that maybe the applicant needs to be a little more forceful with Harry, whoever Harry is, I don't know Harry. But, you know, if they're trying to get in touch with him to get information, maybe he needs to get off the stick and get with it.
In all fairness, Harry's on the stick. It's been addressed, this has been an issue since phase one.
Okay.
And Harry is following the directions of a nine-one-one addressing system.
So the applicant has been hesitant about changing the address to Fordham?
Yes.
I'm no Harry, whatever. So I'm sorry if I don't Harry for no reason.
I'll let him know.
I apologize.
He can take it, can't he?
No.
Yeah, I think with the addresses, it either comes down to meeting nine-one-one requirements or having a Fordham address, so that's.
That's the issue.
Yet to be worked out. I mean, it's still out there. I don't want to say put a driveway on Carritoke, so it's.
The only way they could put it, just pardon the intrusion, but the only way to put a driveway on the Carritoke would be to remove one of the roads that they're planning to install, because there's not enough width.
The only way to have a Carritoke address is to.
Is to have access on the Carritoke.
A driveway on Carritoke.
That would mean a significant change to the planning of the whole development by removing a road from Carritoke.
Sure, sure.
So it'd be in their best interest to just deal with it and go with Fordham. It might be.
Or maybe push the road down further away from radio, right, initially?
I believe that's correct.
Yeah, that was because of the curb issue.
Right, right.
Yeah, I don't want to go backwards on all that.
Uh-uh.
All right. Call for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the preliminary plat use permit, because it will be in the public interest, it will not affect negatively any property values. With the conditions that the staff has stated, correcting the Carritoke Highway address, lot recombination issue, either installing the shrubs or paying the fee to not install the shrubs. And the driveway has already been done, so that's squashed.
Will that also include, just for clarification, the basketball court as well as the playground?
Yes, I apologize, I overlooked that. Changing that from a basketball court and tennis court to basketball court and playground.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Second motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item we have on the amended agenda is PB fifteen thirteen, Carritoke County Solar Arrays. Request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter Four, Use Standards to Implement Standards for Solar Array Setbacks, Groundwater Testing, and Performance Guarantees.
Hey, John, real quickly, I need to make a motion to recuse myself. I did recuse myself previously on the first meeting, in regards to my family having interest in future solar arrays. So I'm gonna need to probably continue that with this as well.
Okay, somebody make a motion to recuse John Wright?
I make a motion to recuse Mr. Wright.
Second motion.
All right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you, John. That's right.
That's fine. Oops.
Okay.
Just a brief reminder, the planning board recommended approval of a solar array text amendment just a few months ago that went to the board of commissioners. The board of commissioners also endorsed the amendment in May, but they ask that an amendment be made to the amendment, for one way of saying that. They've asked that several things be addressed, and I'll bring those to your attention now. One of the items was increasing the setbacks for these solar arrays. Some jurisdictions measure setback from a fence, some measure it from the solar panels themselves. Some say your setbacks are only what your zoning district requires. Some have increased setbacks. So what we have found to be perhaps a happy medium is to set back all components of the solar array system, including the fence one hundred feet from all exterior property lines. And that'll just give a little more space between property lines, and there's already landscaping and fencing there, but it will set back the use itself just a little bit. Another item that we were asked to include is a surety bond that would be posted. So when these items have lived out their life and they're decommissioned, we will have funds in place to ensure that they are removed properly from the land and that the land can revert back to farming or however it was originally used. It is estimate, let's see. It is esti- let's see, the, um, surety bond would be in the form of a cash deposit equal to 115% of the cost of decommissioning minus their salvage value at the time. And that's a report that, um, an engineer can provide for, so a licensed general contractor. And basically, these things are very valuable, um, when it comes to their recyclable... Sorry, I'm seeing things. When it comes to their recyclable worth. So, that's how that prop, that, um, amount was established. Um, the, um, last thing that I'll talk about with you, um, some residents, uh, had expressed a concern about their groundwater being contaminated, um, as, as a result of the operation of these solar systems. We were not able to find an example or even, um... We just were not able to find anything that spoke to water testing for a solar use. The closest thing we found was, was an ordinance that did require, um, groundwater testing at the start of the project, but nothing after that. Um, so, the language that we've included, um, a couple of things have to be addressed. Number one is where do you want the groundwater monitoring wells? Well, one of the directions we were given was to put that groundwater monitoring well in the center of the property. That's fine. We can certainly all understand what the center of the property means. The other more flexible component that we were asked to include, um, was where else on the... Holy cow, you drove too fast. Was where, where else on the property do you want these groundwater monitoring wells? Basically, what we are suggesting is that the groundwater monitoring wells be placed one at each property line and at the lowest point of the property line with the thought, perhaps reasonable thought, that if there are pollutants, they would certainly run downhill and, um, perhaps we would catch them at that point. Um, and once you decide where you're putting them, how many you're putting, then you have to decide what they're testing for. There are thousands and thousands of agents and pollutants that can be tested for. So, to narrow it down, what we are discussing, um, there is a national primary drinking water standard that's regulated by the EPA, and it tests for 80 of the... Can I help you? You're good. Um, and it tests for, um, it lists, um, 80 different items that are tested for. So, that way, that gives the applicant perhaps a ju- better guideline of where you're gonna put them, how many you're gonna put, and what they're gonna be testing for. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff?
Yeah, what was the logic behind, um, moving the fencing and all parts of the solar array back from exterior property lines 100 feet?
Just to give a larger visual buffer between the property line and where the use starts, or where the fence starts for the use.
What was the previous equipment setback from property lines?
It was, um, whatever the zoning district required. In most cases, it's 20 feet from a right-of-way property line, 10, 15 feet from the sides.
Okay. And so, now it's, it's 100?
It'll be 100 feet for all exterior property lines.
So, this particular case that got approved, um, for the zoning on it and everything like that, what was the setbacks that they were gonna be complying? And is this going to cause them to have to move the whole...
It is not, not for the ones that are approved. Um, those had to meet the, the district setbacks, but they far exceeded those with what, with the plans we approved. Some of them were 200 or 300 feet off of property lines.
Yeah.
That's what I was remembering was the 300 feet. We talked about a football field.
They've got a huge buffer around, particularly the one in Moayak.
What happens in the first, in that first 100 feet?
Basically, your landscaping buffer.
Is there criteria for that? Because this is a bigger buffer than what we've looked at before.
Your landscaping standard is gonna remain the same, whether it be a 20-foot setback or 100-foot setback. So, there, there's just more, basically, just a visual buffer that it's set back further from the property line.
Are we setting a precedent for other builders if, if we make them, if we require them to do 100 feet?
For other types of uses, or...
Yeah, I mean...
I don't think it's setting a precedent.
And are they okay? I mean, have they said, yeah, no prob- we have no problem with this?
I have not had one to come in since this has been, um, proposed, but I have talked to, um, the one in Moayak, near ranchland in those, uh, Eagle Creek. And they haven't started construction yet. They're particularly waiting for this text amendment, text amendment, because they want to make sure they're in compliance with what the wishes are. They are absolutely fine with 100 feet, because they're no, they're nowhere near that on any of their, um, units anyways.
And the one in Shawboro, what was their setback from property lines?
Theirs was just district setback, so since it's a commercial use, it'll be 15 feet. But because of just the fencing and buffering that's required, they probably have to scoot it back a little further than the 15 feet and 20 feet at the str- at the right-of-way property lines. And they're going back further than that as well.
So, this will affect them as well?
It will not, not the ones that have already been approved.
Okay. But it will affect the one in Moayak?
It does not have to. However, they're choosing to comply with... They want to make sure they're in compliance with the most recent... They, they know this is in the works, so they want to make sure that they meet that before they break ground.
I guess there is a positive effect from having the fence back farther from the property line. Is that in the case of firefighting equipment or other equipment that would have to battle a fire on an adjacent property, uh, that could be a route that they could take in order to get back there? That could be a positive consequence from having a farther distance back from the property line.
With regard to the testing wells, could we potentially, um, require one in the center of the property to be monitored at whatever the frequency is? And should there be any issues with the testing, then require at a later date monitoring on the outskirts of the property?
Sure, it can be, the, the language can be written in such a way as to do that. To say if there are contaminants found, I would recommend using that same EPA testing at the center well, then that triggers whatever.
Action of other wells on the property?
Sure.
Cause, I mean, that would make sense that that would be the most logical place where there would be contaminants is in the center of the property.
But we, we didn't find any examples of test wells...
No, sir.
On, on any of these type of projects.
Now, the research that I performed via the internet, uh, after receiving our packet, showed that there was only a few cases of where, um, some of the earlier models of solar panels had lead-based solder and cadmium and some other materials that were, uh, a part of the silicon process of creating those that only if in the event that the glass were cracked, would they be filled with water and then later the water come out that, uh, and possibly, uh, have a negative effect. But it, from the documentation I read online, it stated that all that stuff was a very minute possibility of that ever happening. And now, it appears that there are more solar panel-creating companies in the United States and they're not getting them all from China or Japan. And we would not be using lead-based solders if they were manufactured here.
It's new to us.
It is new to us.
So... I kinda hate to be the first one to add a new rule. But would, would it be a situation possibly? I, I guess it would be driven by folks doing these projects. If, if we start out with having a, a monitoring well in the center of these projects and, and, and they're all clean for five or 10 years, you know, I guess someone could propose a text amendment to say, look, there's 10 of them in the county and there's never been a bad test. Can we take this out? But, I mean, I guess we can already see online where that's the case when we look at other municipalities.
Right, yeah.
What would you guys estimate the cost of putting in a monitoring well? The initial cost of putting it in?
I have no clue, to be honest with you.
I'd say a couple thousand dollars. I'm, I'm just trying to think about the mining permits we have. A lot of times, they have to do, uh, monitoring wells or sometimes they do performance guarantees for well replacements. And I, I knew Mr. Cartwright just had in mind where his performance guarantee was $3,000. Mr. Cooper, you probably have done some... I don't know that a monitoring well would be that much...
installs, but we don't monitor. I, I'm not, it would be more than...
Well, there's, there's a recurring cost too, you're right.
That's what I'm thinking about.
That's a good point. So, there's an upfront cost of a couple thousand dollars, I'd say.
At, at, at least. I mean, you, you could do a, a well, depending on the size of it and the depth, it could be $2,000 to $3,000, but then you've got someone with a license monitoring, and I assume it's the recurring cost that, uh...
In a lab, it's gotta test it.
The ones I've seen are about four to five inches in diameter and have a, a lid that you can open and they insert the mechanism down there in order to get the water sample.
Mm-hmm. Yep. All right. I mean, the setbacks make sense. Do you, I mean, 100 feet's not all that. It's 30 steps, basically, from the property line.
My only concern with that was if we're, if we're changing the UDO for all future development, is that... Are we setting a precedent for everybody from this point forward? I know they're okay with it, because they have the property to do it.
Yeah.
But are we setting a precedent for everybody else for future development?
It is for these solar array projects, for sure, absolutely.
Well, until you're not gonna put a solar array on a one or two-acre parcel, it's gonna be a larger parcel that can create the amount of energy that will be necessary to offset the cost of installing it.
That, that's not asking. This is just for solar arrays.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I wouldn't think it would apply to developments or any of that kind of stuff.
So, make sure we're not...
And then the, uh, performance guarantee, that's, that's cash, right?
That's a cash deposit.
We'd have a contractor or an engineer say this is how much it costs to decommission and then back out the cost of, or the value of the equipment.
Right, the recycling value.
So, if it, if it costs 100 grand, the equipment's 90, then he's gotta put up 10 grand plus 15% or whatever.
Yes, sir.
After decommissioning, he gets that back.
Right.
Simple as that.
Right. I hope whoever's here gives it back.
And, and at what point do we determine it's no longer in use?
Um, there's a definition, uh, for decommissioning. I, I want to say it's when it has not been transmitting power for an 18-month period.
18 months?
I believe, it's either 12 or 18.
I think it's 12.
It might be 12.
So, line, line E.
Yep, there it is. The solar energy system owner shall have 12 months to complete decommissioning of the facility if no electricity is generated for continuous 12-month period.
24 months after.
I mean, we've got decommissioning plans for other... I mean, that, that makes sense to where...
And we have decommissioning plans that are required. This is just a step above, beyond that. It's requiring cash upfront to say it will be decommissioned properly.
Tammy, have you talked to the, the people who are gonna, let's say, do this one in Moayak about these wells?
Yes, ma'am.
And?
I'm guessing.
They've never heard of it either.
Yeah.
Well, never mind, they've never heard of it.
Well...
Would they?
They've never been required to do it and they, they are a...
Not fond of the ideal?
They're gonna do what's required.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
They operate in multiple countries, I was told, and they've not seen this requirement before.
So, not only are we new in the county or the state, but the world.
Guys, with...
That's according to them.
Well, well, we've done a little research. Steven's done some research. I just, with, with government, you really gotta be careful about just making up rules with absolutely no justification at all. It's part of the problem with government. And I can't vote in favor of something like that with absolutely no information or justification for it. But that's just me.
I think we have enough rules and regulations.
Well, and, and, and rules are, are good when they...
When they make sense.
When they make sense and, and, and in planning and what we do, that there's reasons for them. At least, that's what we're here for.
And I believe when the, um, commissioners directed us to do this amendment to the amendment, um, they had some property owners before them that were concerned about their groundwater. Perhaps education would help as well, because it's new to all of us.
Sure.
Um, but I think that's where that came from.
Okay. Um, I don't have anyone signed up for the public hearing. You guys wanna talk about solar arrays? You sure? It's fun. Any other, um, questions for staff? All right, discussion?
I would just like to say that, you know, with this thing with the, the groundwater, I'm like the rest of our, you know, several of us here, that why throw on another requirement? That there's no justification for it, because it's like, you know, oh, okay, I complained about one little thing with him, maybe because I don't like him, and then all of a sudden, I've caused him to spend excess money for nothing. You know, and, uh, so I like to...
And it, and it happens.
Right, well, yeah, it happens all the time. And, and, you know, I mean, and then the big EPA is, is over top of all of us with constant groundwater monitoring and everything anyway. And so, you know, if they haven't come up with something in the United States in the, in the number of years that we've had solar farms, why are we reinventing the wheel here?
Mm-hmm. I agree.
What expertise are we going on to, to even think about it?
We don't have any. That's, that's the thing.
Right, we don't have any information on that.
Yeah, and, and so, I would recommend that, that we just delete that part.
All right, well, unless there's other discussion, I'll call for a motion. And this would be for this whole amendment, not just the monitoring well. Whenever, whenever that plays, I gotta do that.
Carol's gonna make a motion.
Huh? I'm sorry. Do you love it?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendment with the exception of Section H and I. And keep in G and the other I here that's in parentheses. Uh, keeping in the, uh, security fencing, uh, being back 100 feet from all exterior property lines, no groundwater monitoring wells, and continue to have the, uh, decommissioning, uh, funds.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second it.
All right, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right, uh, next item on the amended agenda is PB 1511, Dave Knoc, Event Home. Request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 4, Use Standards, Chapter 5, Development Standards, and Chapter 10, Definitions and Measurement to Establish Event Homes as a Permitted Use. There's no swearing for this, is it?
Not protesting.
Okay, all right. Mr. Woody, welcome back.
Yeah, I've made it back from the big city. It was an interesting day. We started at 5:40 this morning, went to Raleigh to talk about big houses. So, I'm gonna tell you guys about that at the back end of this presentation, 'cause I do, I do think the information we learned today is relevant to the discussion. Not directly, it was more building code oriented, but I just wanna give you a big picture of, of big houses, and just maybe where things are at. So, Mr. Knoc, um, I'm, I'm gonna give some background too. Mr. Knoc is, is a resident that lives in the Currituck Club, and he's expressed concern over a large, uh, residential structure in that development. The structure in particular is a 24-bedroom house, I believe it's 24, and, and it frequently has, you know, it's rented by the week, but it, but it frequently has weddings and other types of events that are associated with that weekly rental. Uh, Mr. Knoc initially approached the county about this being a commercial use. The planning staff on that particular piece of property wrote a letter of determination, uh, saying that we felt like, under our UDO... saying that we felt like, under our UDO, under the current UDO as adopted by the Board of Commissioners, that it was consistent with a single-family residential dwelling. That went to the Board of Adjustment. Mr. Knox appealed the staff's interpretation. The Board of Adjustment voted on a three-two vote to uphold the staff. So what that means is three members of the Board of Adjustment said, yeah, we think it meets the definition of single-family dwelling. Two members said it didn't. So the next thing Mr. Knox approached and asked is, are there any other options to try to address the impacts of large residential structures on residential communities? And the next obvious route would be a text amendment. That's basically something that comes to this board for recommendation, then it goes to the Board of Commissioners for a decision in their legislative capacity. The Board of Adjustment interprets the Board of Commissioners' rules, or the Board of Commissioners makes their own rules. So this is the approach where the Board of Commissioners, quite frankly, can decide if they want to change the rules, they're certainly the body that can do it. So that's where this is at tonight, is Mr. Knox is approaching this. From a text amendment standpoint, I think his primary concern is probably the Black Stallion in the Currytuck Club, but also, you know, being a text amendment, this is going to apply countywide. So we're talking about big houses primarily on the Outer Banks, but it could be anywhere on the mainland, wherever it may be. So with that, I'd say that first, I think you're going to see that the staff can't support the text amendment as it's submitted by Mr. Knox tonight. But I also want to say that I don't necessarily disagree that there's not some issues that may need to be looked at regarding large residential structures. So I want to kind of walk through where staff's at and maybe go through the land use plan, some policies, and kind of see what the planning board wants to go from there. But real quickly, to give some background, Mr. Knox submitted a text amendment that requires, originally required, large houses of eight or more bedrooms. Let me look this right. Would apply to houses. This text amendment would apply to current or future dwellings with eight or more bedrooms that are in a rental program and whose primary function is to host more than two special events per year. Now, we ended up changing the eight bedrooms to five thousand square feet because the General Assembly recently passed a law that says local governments can't regulate design standards of single-family dwellings. So if you'll notice, all the communities that are at the beach can no longer limit the number of bedrooms. And where we got five thousand square feet is Nag's Head has done some studies in the past, and they say a five thousand square foot beach house generally yields approximately eight bedrooms. So what we've kind of modified, Mr. Knox agreed to modify the amendment to something that at least isn't inconsistent with state law. So what you're looking at tonight is anything that's existing or future that has more than five thousand square feet, is in a rental program, whose primary function is to host more than two special events. Mr. Knox is proposing they be considered as event houses. And what we've done is we've placed event house as a use in the permitted uses table, and it's allowed in commercial zoning districts. So if you met that threshold under this amendment, you would then be required to either stop hosting the special events, or I guess you could stop, you could take it out of the rental program, you could remove yourself from one of those requirements, or you'd have to rezone the property and bring the property up to commercial standards if you meet those thresholds I just outlined. And I want to say, Mr. Knox stated his intent in this amendment is that existing and proposed dwellings that operate as special event homes are required to apply for and obtain commercial zoning approval, meet commercial building requirements. And he says this amendment is needed for utilization and public safety reasons, and I think he'll probably explain his rationale more during his presentation. What I want to do real quickly is first go through some of the concerns that staff has with that approach. And again, I don't necessarily disagree that there's probably some impact from large houses that may be able to be better addressed through the UDO. But before I get to those, some of the things that staff's concerned about with this particular approach is enforcement. I think it can be a difficult thing to enforce because what we're really doing is we're kind of basing enforcement on the behavior of future occupants of a dwelling. So I know there's instances probably where you may have a house that big, you may rent it part of the year. If you have three special events, are you then in violation of the UDO? You would be. Now, yeah, I think the county could probably slap you on the hand and say, hey, don't do those special events again. So I just think that in some ways, you're having to get into an enforcement about how the house is used, and you're going to have to make sure, do they have a rental agreement? You know, what if they don't have a rental? I just think there's a lot of parameters that are difficult to enforce operationally for the staff. Another thing that I would be concerned about, I don't know that it's necessarily inappropriate to try to address some of these large structures moving forward. I think it would be difficult to go back and apply this to existing structures. I don't think that's impossible. The elected body could certainly amortize or say, these are rules that in a year, two years, whatever, these structures are going to have to meet. Or if we created the commercial use and we deem those structures to be commercial, I guess they would have to be subject to the new rules. But I just think it's difficult to kind of go back in time and to apply a set of standards to a project that that at the time was permitted as the county allowed it to be permitted. Right or wrong, that's how the county allowed it to be permitted. So I think it's a difficult prospect to go back and and kind of retrofit things. Not impossible, it's just difficult. And the other thing is, I don't, and partly, you know, and if you do that, if you say these existing event houses have to be zoned commercial, then I guess at that point, are you introducing perhaps commercial zoning districts in areas that may not necessarily be appropriate? If the scale of the house is not appropriate, if there's things about big houses that are inconsistent, I would argue it's better to address those specific impacts than say to make them, push them towards a commercial zoning district and maybe put the county in a situation of, for example, adding commercial zoning districts in the off-road area, things like that. So I think there's some challenges with this text amendment as written. I think you, as a planning board, can review that and probably maybe you can see some of that. I think Mr. Knox can provide information to support these proposed standards. And again, maybe some discussion can occur and some back and forth to work through these. One thing I do want to point out, though, and it's important, is our land use plan, which, as this board knows, when we make we make decisions, we try to make sure that our decisions are consistent with the land use plan. It's kind of a guiding document. The land use plan does have specific policies that set out that Currytuck County should make efforts to address the impacts of large residential structures. So the idea of dealing with some of these impacts is not unfounded, it's not unprecedented, there is some policy support for that concept. And generally, what the land use plan says is that when you have houses that are being labeled a single family that accommodate fifteen, twenty, twenty-five or more people and are doing things to circumvent existing zoning laws, or, you know, if there's laws that couldn't anticipate the impact of these types of building forms, that the county should address these or review these development regulations and try to address these impacts directly. And not necessarily just attach labels to things that may not actually fit the label. So in that sense, I think there's some precedent for addressing some impacts. Another thing the land use plan says particularly is that when you have these large homes, that perhaps you could look at, can't do this now, but the land use plan says the number of bedrooms or occupancy levels in proportion to the lot size, well and septic issues, you know, a good example of that's probably in the off-road area where you have these large houses, but you don't have central water. You don't have central wastewater. So, you know, some of these houses have three and four wells that are used for drinking water. And, you know, you have, you know, the question is, you know, is that impacting the aquifer level of adjoining property? So I do think sometimes this can be more complicated for a water and sewer issues in the off-road area. Fire safety, emergency, you know, if these houses are, you know, if they're on fire, can people evacuate appropriately? Are there things we need to think about in terms of access? At some point, are they big enough where the fire trucks need to have better access to these houses? So there's things I think the land use plan identifies as considerations. And along those lines, in the memo, I outlined a couple of things. One is, as an example, if overflow parking is a common problem, and it is, these event houses, a lot of times you'll see photographs or you can see that those houses are just lined down these residential streets. Well, perhaps, you know, appropriate way to deal with that is maybe maybe the bigger houses need to have more parking spaces available, and which, of course, would in turn require bigger lots to be required. So, you know, if you're going to have a twenty-four bedroom house and you're going to have to have the facilities to support it, you may in fact need a three and four acre lot, which in and of itself, right there, is probably going to preclude these big houses from being in Wellhead or villages at Ocean Hill or areas where you have these smaller, typical six and eight bedroom houses. Another thing is if there are scale issues, if you've got houses that are twenty-four bedrooms and they're three stories tall, and they're surrounded by houses that are four bedrooms, five bedrooms, and two stories tall, there's things you can do, such as you can reduce the side setbacks, so you push the bigger structure away from the smaller structure. You can establish floor area ratios, which makes the house square footage be proportional to the lot size. Some places even go so far as to basically say, if you have a house, it can't be taller than the average height of the two adjoining houses. So you can do things to try to mitigate impacts of large houses. Staff's position is that that would be, in our opinion, the more appropriate way to try to address the impacts. Is try to identify the concerns and have quantitative, objective standards to try to address those. So I guess our recommendation is I don't think staff can support the amendment as proposed because I'm concerned with some of our ability to enforcement and some of the implications. But I don't think the amendment as proposed is invalid. I think it's a discussion that probably is worth having. For the planning board tonight, you've got to decide, number one is if you think Mr. Knox's text amendment is consistent with the land use plan, and if you think it merits a favorable recommendation or not. If you feel like it doesn't, then you could either table the request and try to work on this, or if you have some ideas yourself, or of course, you have the option of just providing a recommendation and moving it forward to the Board of Commissioners, who ultimately is a legislative body and is going to have to deal with this at the end of the day. So I'll kind of leave that up to the board and Mr. Knox to decide how to approach this tonight. I do want to take a second. Another, so today we went to the chief building inspector myself went to Raleigh. We were subpoenaed for the North Carolina Building Code Council, and there's a house in the off-road area that's being built. It's twenty-four bedrooms. It's really, it's, it's... I mean, it's been labeled as an event house. There's permits and things that call it a wedding venue and an event house, and I certainly think it's a large house that it'll be rented by the week, but at the same time, it'll have events there that accompany that week rental. The North Carolina Department of Insurance issued an interpretation that said that house was effectively an R1 classification. And what that means is it's a hotel. Obviously, and so what the county did is the county in working with the builder, issued a residential building permit, but as part of that residential building permit required that commercial code requirements be included in the construction of that house. So based on the NC DOI interpretation, the county issued a residential building permit that said you're going to have to put sprinklers in, you're going to have to have lighted exits, you're going to have to have higher floor loads, et cetera. So it's basically would have been built to essentially a commercial construction standard, but the county still would have viewed it as residential. I think our opinion was that would have at least had the life safety features in the large structure to make sure if an event did happen, people could evacuate the structure safely. The builder appealed that to the Building Code Council, went today, it was argued, and I found out on the way home that they ruled in favor of the building contractor, and the county is not able, in the North Carolina Building Code, to apply commercial building standards to these structures, to these large residential structures. So that is not an option at this point. Don't know if the Building Code Council will address this at some point, but as it stands today, the North Carolina Building Code Council views these large twenty-four bedroom structures as residential structures. So with that, I can answer any questions you have. The one that's being constructed in the off-road area is a three acre lot. The one in the Currytuck Club, is that a three acre lot also? Two acre? The one in the Currytuck Club that's already existing and built is a two plus acre lot. I will say this, I think most of those large houses tend to be on two and three acre lots. They already tend to be on larger lots, so. Now, where it gets interesting is sometimes you'll have eighteen bedroom houses that may be on a, you know, half acre, well, more than a half acre, probably like an acre lot or so. One more thing I just want to point out, and the other thing is I think when you try to figure out at what point does a structure need to be treated differently, you've also got to figure a way, where do you draw that line? I mean, use bedrooms, but I mean, is it eight bedrooms? Is it twelve? Is it sixteen? That's another thing I think you've got to, at what point does a structure become of a size that you then want to start to address certain types of impacts? Or is it when the structure is a certain size compared to the surrounding structures? And there's different ways you can do it, but you've got to kind of pick a line. I know a lot of the Derrick County communities have always used eight bedrooms as their marker. I don't know if I know exactly why they do that. That's what they've done in the past.
What happens after eight bedrooms in Derrick County?
You can't build a house. So in Nag's Head, not Derrick County, but Nag's Head, Duck and Kitty Hawk, you can't build a house larger than eight bedrooms.
On paper.
On paper. Yes. Matter of fact, what Nag's Head does, in Nag's Head, you can't build a house larger than five bedrooms. However, if you're willing to incorporate design standards, the old Nag's Head, like roof pitch and porches, they'll let you have the additional three bedrooms. So they actually have kind of a carrot and stick type approach.
So you're saying the North Carolina Building Code Council says, if you issue a residential permit, you cannot require them to do the commercials
Yes, if...
upgrades or whatever you want to call them.
If the county issues, if the design professional applies and says this is a residential structure, and normally the design professional is going to submit that information, the county is going to, generally, we're going to accept that unless something seems really strange. Issue the residential building permit, provided they are renting it on a weekly basis. And if they have an event during that week, the Building Code Council did not look at that as a commercial structure. Now, obviously, if you rent rooms individually, if you're renting it daily, I think that's a different story. Or if you're renting it one Saturday for just a wedding, I think clearly that's a different context. But but I will say one thing about the bill, don't let that throw you off too much because this is zoning tonight and that was building codes. They are two different things.
They work together.
They do work, but...
For this kind of...
But I feel like it's information that the planning board should be aware of.
Yes, absolutely. So with the way the text amendment is worded, we're all taking notes. I mean, it seems subjective. Spot zoning could very likely be an issue if we wanted to look at this as a commercial project in a residential area. How does that play in? Especially...
I guess I would say this, if we were going to say, if we put these parameters out and we're going to say, well, these are commercial, and then we're going to put everybody in the position of having to rezone properties, I'd just say, just ban them. Honestly, I think an easier way than doing this is just so you can't have houses that are bigger than five thousand square feet. I mean, that's going to be, for me, from my department, it's a lot easier, that's the Nag's Head model, that's a lot easier to enforce than than once we're over five thousand square feet, trying to find these variables and things that are based on the operational characteristics.
Right, yeah, because that gets very subjective, right?
It can be.
But that doesn't do anything about these that are already done.
I think the ones that are built, and I mean, I think Mr. Knox is going to disagree with me on this, but I think the ones that are built, I just think that it's tough when somebody comes in and gets a permit and they rely upon the county's rules and whatever we've done to this point, and then they kind of turn the tables on them. It can be done, but I just think that's difficult.
Yeah, I think a builder or citizen or whoever should have some assurance that if they if they operate within the rules of that day, that they've done the right thing. I mean, I hate to think that with the building code, and I know we're not talking about that, but I kind of compare it to, you know, this building code that changes all the time. You don't have to go back and change every house that's ever been built. And you couldn't. I mean, it wouldn't be legal with the building code. I know zoning is different.
Yeah, that's right. But now, obviously, if John Cooper built a residential house and, you know, next week, you go in there and you literally put in an eight bedroom bed and breakfast. Now, that is obviously a change of occupancy. At that point, you know, you can do things. But I think in terms of just, like you say, like if the building code changes the way an electrical outlet's wired, or I think that's just difficult to go in and retrofit.
Sure, sure. Well, and we're not talking about a change in occupancy either.
Yeah, that's...
It's the same.
Yeah.
Is what it started as.
And the last thing I'll say, just so the planning board, my job as a planning director is not, I try not to make law. I don't make rules. That's not my job. My job is to try to implement them. And then when I'm not sure, I try to interpret and I try to determine what I think the Board of Commissioners' intent was. And that's part of why, you know, again, I don't disagree that some of these big houses are probably, they're pushing towards something more than the old beach boxes we used to see on the beach. I don't doubt that. But I'm not sure that the Board of Commissioners has given me, I feel like, the proper legislative framework to really address that. So I feel like, from my perspective, and to Mr. Knox's credit, he's here tonight to try to do that, but I mean, I think that I don't have the direction from the board to say that our current model doesn't meet our UDO.
Any questions for staff? Okay, I've got, um, two folks signed up, the applicant, David Knox. Come up, please. We've got a total of twenty minutes for anyone speaking in support of the amendment.
Hey, how are you?
Name, name and address, please.
Uh, Dave Knox, 573 Hunt Club Drive, Carralla, North Carolina. And I'm in the Currituck Club. And I guess my claim to fame is I'm the first year-round resident. So I've lived and paid taxes here for 17 years over in the Currituck Club. And prior to that, I had property for, well, I've been paying taxes for 37 years. I've had some land over in Ocean Sands, so I guess you can call me a local now. I've been around long enough. I guess, another point I'd bring out to you is my wife and I, when I retired from the power company, I moved down here and I, we both got our real estate license. I worked for Kitty Hawk Land Company, the developer. So I sold lots in the development. My wife was the first year-round, or first full-time resident of Village Realty. So she run it, worked on the rental side, I worked on the sales side, and ultimately I went over to the rental side. So I've got experience in real estate rental, and I've lived there. So I, I know, I got 30 or 40 keys to neighbors' houses. So everybody knows me, I know everybody in the community. When this place, this facility, I'm going to call it, the Black Stallion, was, plans were given to the planning group. I went up and, I heard about it, I went up and asked about it, and Jason, one of the planners there, brought the plans out, threw it on the table. He said, he looked at it and he said, ah, another event house. He didn't call it a home. It's an event house. You don't look at it as a home, not where you're going to retire to. It's every week, some function going on there, okay? And so it's existing, and what I'm trying to get you and everybody else to believe, weddings are a big business. Hopefully, nobody will argue that point. We have weekends here, you've got brochures, wedding guides, you've got a weekend. Here, everybody want to go to the weekend on, in January for weddings? You've got, here's a picture right here of the Whalehead Club. You all are in the business, the Whalehead Club. So this rental property competes with the clubhouse in the Currituck Club. It competes with the Whalehead Club, it competes with the Sandaling Inn. It's in the wedding business, it's in the retreats. One of the functions they had there was a church retreat. It is not family going down to the beach to a house. That's why I'm saying it needs to be rezoned commercial. And I looked around and I said, okay, be fair. Why did I pick two, more than two events? I said, well, what if the owner's son wants to be married? Or they want to have a family reunion? So I put some in there, but anything over two, and in this case, it's every weekend, they're having some kind of event. And they all aren't family, they're coming in from every direction. So I think we need to look at it. You all are more attuned to all the rules and regulations than I am, but at least it's on the table for discussion and I'm open for possible changes to my amendment. But I liked it as I wrote it. I'm open for questions, too.
First of all, appreciate your time putting this together. It's, it's something that we know is, needs to be looked at and, and just appreciate you getting the ball rolling.
And, and mine is not the only, you know, the Black Stallions in my neighborhood, two blocks away. Marie there has one billion built up in four-wheel drive. They're all around. You can go on the Twitty website and find, they've got 15 or 17 listed. You can go to right beside the Hampton Inn, 29 bedrooms going in. Now what blew my mind is that was originally zoned, and correct me if I'm wrong, commercial, because you had the Pine Island Diner. They rezoned it residential. Okay, let's be smart, people. Why are they doing that? Because if it's residential, the building costs are cheaper. They don't have to put in all the fire alarms, the exit signs, the sprinkler system. So why do they want to call it? Because it's cheaper to build if it's residential. Why do they want to build it and call it residential? From an insurance standpoint, think about it. If it's a hotel, you're going to have higher insurance. If it's residential, 24-bedroom, it's going to cost you less money. And then you got the general construction costs too, so. These people were thinking, and it's money-driven, I'll call it residential even though it isn't. And they're lying. They're lying to you, they're lying to me, they're lying to the neighborhood. So they're not telling the truth. And I'm open for any questions.
Okay, any questions for the applicant? We can stop that clock. Any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, the last thing I need to mention is it impacts you, the county, directly, and it's from the tax standpoint. If they call it residential, they're paying, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, this tax structure's the same, but if they were seen as commercial, the property value would go up, therefore your tax revenue would go up too. So they're doing it, it's all money-driven by these big pockets they're developing these things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Could I ask you a question, sir?
Sure.
Sorry. This, this 24-bedroom resident that you're talking about, the, tell me the house on either side, what size they are?
Well, one's a hotel.
It's my guess they're like five bedrooms, maybe one-six.
Okay.
One's four, one's five, and one's six. There's, there's three going down that street. It's at the end of a cul-de-sac.
Is directly to the north is, is the hotel? Is that, am I thinking of the right spot? Where the, there used to be a restaurant or a diner?
Oh, no, if, if she's talking about the Black Stallion, I'm.
You're talking about, okay.
All right, yeah.
Place he's talking about.
Yeah, you're, you're right, because it was the Pine Island Diner and it's right north of.
Right, and that was 24-bedrooms as well?
That's 29 that's going in there. And it's.
And it's right next to the Hampton Inn.
Yeah.
Just making sure I was in the right spot there.
Any other questions?
This one in the Currituck Club, is that an oversized lot relative to other lots?
It was the largest lot. Everybody pictured it would be a large home there, but.
Not that big.
Not that big, and not being utilized, how it's being utilized. You know, if, if they were to go online on Twitty website and say, this is not an event house, it's for family use only, I wouldn't have any hangup on that, okay? That's what they need to do. But everybody comes down, and one of the handouts I have in here is, and I sent some to Ben, is that some of the neighbors are getting these things that they want a variance from the noise ordinance, okay? Because they're already planning to have a wedding and a big band out there. So do you want to live beside a facility that every weekend, there's parties going on, rehearsal party, wedding party, the actual wedding? None of us do, so. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I think one of the issues with these houses is not that they're so large, I mean, yes, they're really large, but they have a certain number of bedrooms, but it's not like 30 people are staying in each bedroom. The appropriate number of people are typically staying overnight in them, except at some point during their weekly rental, they are creating a general overflow, parking, people, noise, resources, and then that is kind of the problem. It's not so much like what they're doing Monday through Friday, it's Saturday, they're really just.
It's, yeah, it's the Friday, the Saturday, the Thursday, Friday, and the Saturday is the time, the event. Here's a copy of what one of the neighbors got, and he sent it to me. But yeah, like I say, you know, I live in the community and there's only like 25 of us. They're year-round residents, and then there's a lot of second homes. Only 40% of our community is rentals. The rest is either year-rounders, second homeowners, or undeveloped lots, okay? So we're, we're not a resort community, like Pine Island. You know, I don't think anybody lives there year-round. My belief is, so, you know, it might not bother you if everybody in the whole row is partying, but, you know, we got people that work, have to get up and go to a job. So it's a different environment for us. Thank you.
Mr. Knox, I've got one question for you. In there is, you've got one really big building that looks like, are they condo units?
We have two, uh.
Two big buildings?
Units that are called Windswept Ridge.
Okay.
Up on top of the hill, they're, I guess, north of the main entrance.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right behind the Harris Teeter, pretty much.
Correct.
Yeah, now, um, what size are those units? Are they all like two-bedroom units?
They're two, I lived up there for a while, so I owned and rented them. Two, three, and four-bedroom units.
Okay.
And they're purchased and then rented out by people.
Right. And how many, how many, do you know how many units are in each building?
Fifteen units to each building.
Just 15?
Yes, five on each floor, through floors.
Just so you guys have an idea about the house he's talking about, that, the Black Stallion. It's 24 bedrooms, 21 full baths, 10 and a half baths. It has a 30 by 50 pool. It is 20,697 square feet, it has two elevators. It has a detached building behind it that is the master suite, what we would call a poolhouse, but larger, detached, which is the master suite and master bedroom. And it was built in 2013.
What's interesting to me also is the poolhouse that you were talking about has that master suite for, of course, the bride and the groom to spend the night. That's larger than the two or three homes that I ever bought. So it's a, it's a large facility. The other thing that's unique, and I'm going to pass this one around, I want to ask my question, does this look like your garage, okay? Their garage has laminate flooring on it. Does your garage have laminate flooring? They were required because of our covenants to have two garage doors. So they got the garage doors, but that's their party room. That's where they hold their dances. That's where the catering kitchen is in there. The whole place was designed and built as an event house. It was not a residential home. And that's why I'm saying we need to put it down. We need to have the Black Stallion put down. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant before he sits down? Or while he's sitting down?
All right, I've got one more person signed up to speak, and it's Ms. Marie Long. You'll give us your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Marie Long. My address is 1437 Ocean Pearl in the off-road area. I'm right next door to the house that was being discussed in Raleigh today. And needless to say, I'm really disappointed in their decision. Ben, uh, Ben told me, and that's why he called me in the hallway. And I'm not quite sure, I, I don't, I'm probably going to jump all over the place because I don't know exactly what their decision says. I do know what they were discussing was one specific case, it's the house, I'm sorry, I cannot use the word house either. It's the development next to me. So they ruled, and Ben, you might know more than I do, or we might have to wait till we get an official decision. They ruled on that case, not a broad thing. We don't know that they're changing the building code. Regardless, I mean, it's very disappointing, but how they word their decision will probably decide, make it, make the decision for the Department of Insurance, who made the formal interpretation, whether they want to carry that forward to the Superior Court. It's always a possibility, I'll be rooting them on to do it. The, one of the things I was going to talk to you about, but unfortunately I can't, I can still tell you what it says, but the building code specifically, you talked earlier about things being black and white, it's real black and white. If you've got a, a dwelling that has more than five unrelated people in transient occupancy, which is less than 30 days, it's not residential. It, it is not a single-family dwelling. That was what the decision they made on this particular house, and there's a lot of evidence, and I won't go into all that. The reason the applicant challenged this, they accepted the building permit as issued by the county. They offered the life safety features. The county accepted those, issued a single-family dwelling permit. They started construction, then they went and appealed the formal interpretation. Department of Insurance upheld the formal interpretation, so they've now appealed it to the Building Code Council. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the Building Code Council. It's a little frightening, the power they have, it's pretty much like the fox guarding the hen house. And the reason they appealed it specifically was to not have to put in these life safety features in a two, $3 million project, about $150,000, less than 5% of their cost, to keep the occupants of that house safe. One of the biggest issues in these large developments is they don't have any more safety requirements than a four-bedroom house on the mainland. Nothing, zero, nothing. And it's, to me, it, it's the scariest part, and I don't even understand how anybody can make this kind of ruling. So anyway, I'll try not to get too, too into that. The house that is being constructed next to me is, we are still in litigation over that, by the way, as to whether it's a single-family dwelling or not, per our UDO. The house, the development is, in our opinion, three buildings, each under 5,000 square feet, connected by a conditioned hallway. So there is a U shape, a fourth building just under 4,000 square feet, which is an outdoor pavilion, all, all on one floor, which pretty much you know that that's going to exist. This development is 10 feet from me, because that is the setback, 10-foot setback. It, it, I lost the train, thought what I was going to tell you next about it. Well, anyway. This house is still under construction, and there is the Black Stallion. And as far as these really large houses, in my opinion, there are two others. One is the Pine Island Lodge, the one next to the Hampton Inn, which I'm not quite sure if they've got their CO, or if they have, they've just gotten it, do you know?
They've just got it.
And because they are, according to Twitty website, this is the first week, this would, this coming week would be the first week it'd be available for rental. 29-bedroom, not one LICA life safety required. And, and interesting, I'm not sure that it, I don't think it was rezoned because you're allowed to build residential on commercial, correct, Ben?
Correct.
I don't think it was rezoned. I think they just chose to build residential so they wouldn't have to put in the life safety requirements and whatever else you have to do when you build a commercial. The, the fourth house is called the Wild Horse, it's also in the off-road area. It's on a 10-acre lot, there are no buildings anywhere near it. It's 24 bedrooms, and it was built in 2010. And I, the reason I'm here is to support Mr. Knox's concern about the large developments, and I know that Ben does understand all this as well. And there, there is that question of whether the existing buildings and all, like I told you, there's probably four of them, and I don't know what the solution is to that, but I do know that one of the problems is everyone is not acting in good faith. If people were acting in good faith, you wouldn't have this problem to begin with. If someone did not come in and say they were building a single-family dwelling, when that's not how it's going to be used, you wouldn't have the issue. Mr. Knox actually has proof, a signed statement from the person that built the house he's talking about that said it was going to be used as a residence. It, it's, it's a real, it's a real. It, it's, it's a real, it's a real confusing issue, it's really, it's one of those things that, mm, there's enough gray area in the way things are written, that a lot of things are being getting, gotten away with, that that's why it's so important, and it's really crucial that it be done as quickly as possible, that something be put in to put restrictions on these houses, there's some, um, the other thing I wanted to tell you is, the, and one thing I wanted to bring out, too, is when you talk about a three or four acre lot, it sounds really big. The area I'm in, it's called Ocean Beach, every lot, pretty much every lot's three acres, my lot's three acres, but the lot is a hundred and thirty feet by a thousand feet. So, it sounds like a big lot, but it, it's like this. And in addition, on this particular lot, there's wetlands all over the place. In case you didn't know this, though, you can pretty much buy your way out of that land, you pay a million dollars, or not really, you pay very little, actually, mitigate, and you can fill and do whatever you want to. So, um, I, I'm a little concerned about the implication that a three or four acre lot is always really, really big, because it's all relative to what's around it. And what's on this, in our case, what's on either side are two private residences, mine and, and our neighbors. Anyway, and the bedroom limit thing, um, that, that Ben was talking about, um, that's out the window now, but using square footage or occupancy is, is a way to help with that. And I understand the difficulty in enforcing use in some airway, but again, I think you have to hold people accountable, first of all, when they apply for this stuff. And there are ways to find things accountable. It, and it isn't just a wedding on a weekend, there are corporate events going on in these houses. There's daily events going on, and, and to begin with, you've got, like you were talking about during the week, fifty people in one house is a lot of people. It's a lot of people, I don't care how many bedrooms it is, that's a lot of people to live next door. And, and then when they bring in more people for the events, if it's a wedding, for example, if the event is a corporate retreat, it's going on all week. If the event is a church retreat, if it's any kind of get-together, a company comes in and brings their group in for the week, you've got those people, and I, when I say, I don't want to say just partying, 'cause it's not even, it's not even that, it's, because ten vacationers can be noisy. It's, it's the concept, this is not a, a, a family vacation. This is, in, in my opinion as well, it is a commercial venture. At the very least, it's, it's a commercial venture and should have the life safety features. And there may be a way to compromise, like Ben said. I, I don't know what you're all gonna come up with, but, um, you know, I, I think, let me put my glasses on, be sure there wasn't, the biggest thing, too, that I was saying, is that the, it, the issue of people acting in good faith, um, comes up a lot because of having things written that are a little bit vague, and if someone wants to take advantage of a way to get around something, um, they'll find a way to do it. So, whatever the text amendment turns out to be, um, or whatever the solution turns out to be, it needs to be very, very, very clear. And, and I will say this, too, I'm in the off-road, um, I'm gonna lose my water, there's no question in my mind, when fifty people are in the house next to me and they're dreading the water, I will lose my water. And I don't know what I'm supposed to do, 'cause I can't come, nobody complained, 'cause I've already said I'm gonna lose it. I have a pond, it's gonna, you know, it's gonna go away. So, anyway, sorry, I don't mean to get so emotional, I'm usually pretty professional, but, uh, it's a big issue. And today's events did not help particularly, so. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Okay. Any, um, any questions for Ms. Long?
Would you feel better if they were forced to put in the life-saving features?
Oh, of course I would. I mean, we just lost two houses in Wellhead this past weekend. Suppose someone had, unfortunately, that's what it's gonna take to get somebody's attention. Someone's gonna get hurt in one of these fires in these big homes. And then those people, they're gonna go after the owners, they're gonna go after the rental companies, and they're coming after this county big time for, for allowing those houses to be built with no safety features to begin with. And, and I don't blame them, I think it's very frightening. I would definitely feel better with life safety features. I don't think they, I don't think they should, I think we should have some restrictions on them as well. I'm not against big houses, I just think they have to have, you know, certain, I don't love them, frankly, but I think they have to have restrictions and requirements and things that don't let what's happening happen.
I mean, you're looking at one in your side yard, so...
I'm looking at one that I can't even see my side yard. I mean, it's, Ben glimpsed it when it was sort of started, and even though that's not the issue, you can't tell people they can't block your view. I mean, I guess you can, but that's not really the issue to me. It's much worse than I thought. I mean, it is like living next to a hotel building. It is a U shape, like a Holiday Inn, with the gazebo's not there yet, or it's a pavilion, that's what I call it. So, it, it changes everything.
It's complicated, too, because up there, you know, you, you have the idea of planning that it's residential, there is no commercial, but you're also looking to establish that these residences are commercial features.
Right.
Or at least in the future, they would be considered commercial. So, would you consider what was up there already commercial, and then allow existing property owners to say, "Well, there is existing commercial. We should have more commercial. There already is, don't deny it's right to have more commercial." And I have property up there, and my wife grew up there, and, you know, it's, uh, it's a very sensitive area.
Right.
And, um, it is unfortunate to see, you know, really...
Well, and the off...
...up there when it doesn't seem to be in keeping with the nature of Coro.
Exactly.
But, this is, you know, like they say, the horse got out of the pen, you know, it's like...
Interesting, that's exactly what the owner told us when we tried to buy property back, was, "Well, the horse is already on the barn." But, you are right, in the off-road area, and I don't want to take anything away from Mr. Knox's text amendment, but in the off-road where it's particularly difficult, we do not have any infrastructure, none. And what you just said, and I probably should be careful with what I say, but I think you may have just said some things, I, I'm sure you're familiar with the Freedman case, it, I'm sure he is using exactly what you just said, that you have a commercial up there, nobody's calling it commercial, so...
Well, I think that's part of, yeah, I mean, 'cause we've been around and heard the Freedman case previously, you know, so I think that that's all part of a very complicated situation, and, and I mean, that we're looking at tonight as a planning board, when realistically, this is an issue that's just so broad.
Right.
It's gonna involve so many other parties than us tonight and us sitting up here, and it's so far-reaching. I mean, it's really one of the more pivotal issues in the county right now.
I agree.
These large houses, especially when you see in other counties, there aren't large houses like that.
It doesn't come up.
There doesn't have such large houses.
Right. Duck, um, uh, if you go back from Currituck County, um, Duck has a, um, let me stop and think now, I don't want to say it wrong. Duck, it may be eight, but I'm not so sure it's not six-bedroom limit. Southern Shores has a seven-bedroom limit. Kitty Hawk has no limit, but their lots are all so small that it, it just takes care of all these issues. Kill Devil has no limit, they're getting ready to have conversations about limits. And, um, uh, Nag's Head had an eight-bedroom limit. They're all having to change these bedroom limits, and they've already gone to their town councils to try to get this done, and they're gonna look at square footage and occupancy or combination of the two, are what those groups are doing. Southern Shores already, within their seven-bedroom limit, they also had in there, um, they related to deceptive use and to the Department of Health and Human Services, and, uh, the occupancy's limited to fourteen, so it reinforced their seven bedrooms without having to call it seven bedrooms, so they don't have to change what they're doing. Farther down, unincorporated there, I, I don't, I haven't gone, my plan was to check everybody for bedrooms, but bedrooms went out the window, so it didn't really matter, so...
Ma'am, may I ask, are you a permanent resident?
I am not a permanent resident. I, I mean, I really am a permanent resident, I'm not a legal permanent resident. Our home is a, is actually a second home. I'm there probably ninety percent of the time. My husband is still working in Virginia, um, so he comes down on weekends and supports me being there the rest of the time. We plan on retiring there, we built our house to retire, um...
And how long have you had the...
Um, we, we bought the property in two thousand two, and the house was completed in two thousand four.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Close the, uh, public hearing, and we discuss. I mean, we know it's a big issue, I think John really summed it up really well, it's, it's a lot more involved than a county planning board. We've got the, uh, the building code. I mean, these houses, we, we've talked about three or four tonight, they're currently all legal, right? I mean, based on what...
Yeah, current, currently under our, our UDO structure, they're all legally permitted.
Okay, so, what we've got is a situation, um, the land was purchased, plans were drawn, house was built, houses rented, all going by the rules. So, do we look at, at house size, which we can't look at bedrooms anymore, or do we look at use, or do we look at other, other standards that Ben was talking about? And, and I think it will be going forward, going backwards, I mean, to me, doesn't seem fair from a property rights type perspective, if, if you, if what you do to begin with meets the current rules.
But, but if, for example, you, the Holiday Inn comes to you, Ben, and says, "We want to build something on this property, it's gonna be residential," and they later use it as a hotel, I mean, what recourse do you have to go after them to...
Then, I think, in that case, our ordinance clearly distinguishes between a single-family dwelling and a hotel use, so I, I feel like I could probably pretty easily demonstrate that they have changed the use of that property.
Not the case in these situations?
But, yeah, I, I would say, so in this situation, we have single-family dwellings, have bed and breakfast, we have hotels. That's, that's kind of the gamut of our lodging, uh, we have room and boarding houses, too, I should say, so th- those are the options. I, I don't know, if you got a, a vent house that rents weekly, you're there seven days, you know, for, I don't know, let's just say, for two of those days, for four-hour intervals, you have a wedding, and one day you have rehearsal dinner. So, the vast majority of the hours, there's still a house that's in a weekly rental. Now, I don't, I don't think you can, I think it's hard to go from that to a hotel. Now, if they're doing one-day rentals of rooms, that, that's gonna be easy to say it's a hotel. So, I guess the problem is, is you've got house, like we all know it, then you've got hotel, basically, there's nothing in between, so, then I, you know, the staff gets put in a position of interpreting the board's intent, and you're trying to say, "Well, when does that event house, when does it become more like a hotel than, say, a house?" And that's, that's a difficult thing to work through. I don't think they've, I, in my opinion, based on the ordinances we have, as written, they haven't crossed that threshold yet.
It's, so we don't, in our ordinance, we don't have, uh, a definition of, I mean, there's no way for us to determine whether or not that's, that's a, not a hotel, but there's no verbiage in there that says what it is.
That's right. There's no verbiage that, that is, that put, there's nothing that puts it, there's nothing that exists in between house and hotel.
Which also means that there's nothing in there that, that we can use to say, "You can't do this."
Um...
Currently.
No.
So, much of it is tied to the occupancy and the amenities within it. So, when it incorporates the food service, the kitchen, the space to handle folks in a really intense sort of, like, social environment, that is what is making these houses click. It's that they are just big old houses, they're just mansions, but it's like taking the ballroom and the commercial kitchen from the Holiday Inn and putting it in there for about one day each week.
That's right.
That's really what, that's the difference. It's very intense use.
And, and to the credit of the building inspectors, you know, like the house at the Pon, the, the Pine Island diner, they, they, they set up to do the inspection, and there's a commercial hood on, on the property, they, they wouldn't let them install it. I mean, if we know, and that gets back to probably some of Marie's points about what, what's their intent, we try to make sure these things aren't blatantly commercial uses, um, but it's, you know, again, if, it's tough. A lot of communities have, have tackled this issue directly, we, we have not yet, and I'll, I'll say that on the record, we, we really haven't tackled it, and we probably should.
And, and the way most communities deal with it, it's either, it's size restrictions, it sounds like.
They tend to cap it, you know, they just, I guess they just cap the size, and, and perhaps that's the easy way not to deal with all the issues that come with a big house. I don't know if our Board of Commissioners will cap the size, I, I don't know the answer to that.
If, if it's not dealing with the house directly, then you are policing use.
Yeah.
And, and getting very subjective, so it would be, I would think, more effective to put parameters on, on a house.
I think so. And I wanna, I wanna say, even Marie's point was, I said lot size, but another very valid way to look at it is lot width. I mean, ma- maybe there, there's a relationship between the width of a lot and the size of the house, and there's, there's things I feel like you could do to maybe indirectly push bigger houses into more appropriate locations.
How, how long have, uh, Nag's Head and some of the other municipalities have, had these restrictions?
Do you know that, Danny?
Do not know.
Nag?
I mean, is it, I, not, not in a...
I'll say, I can say this, you know, Nag's Head has at least had their restrictions for at least fifteen years, because Gary Ferguson worked for Nag's Head when they did it, and he came here for five years, I've been here eight, so Nag's Head is probably one of the first ones to do it, and it's been about fifteen years. Then I think Duck and Southern Shores probably followed their lead.
Does a development like, uh, Currituck Club, do they have a homeowners association?
They, they, they do, and I, and I'll, now that you've said that, I'll, I'll say, I didn't wanna, I think there's another avenue for assoc, I mean, associations probably have more direct ability to, to prevent these types of, of dwellings than perhaps the county does, so they certainly could address it through their covenants.
Right.
Yeah.
But, that said, once the covenants are in place, it takes a three-quarter vote from the citizens to change the covenants.
Well, I'd say in the Currituck Club's instance, I think their covenants don't allow commercial uses, and, and their, their board voted to approve it.
Come up to the podium if you would.
I had a feeling that this subject would come up, okay?
I was not...
About the Property Owners Association. We lost two members of our ACC over this issue. They resigned because the ACC voted the Black Stallion down, so it ended up going to the board, okay? And the board brought, and, and this is all hearsay, okay, from me, I, so I wasn't at these meetings. Board brought in their legal representation, their attorney, and there's nothing in our covenants, just like there's nothing in your, uh, UDO that limits square footage. So, if this guy's gonna come and swear on the Bible that this is a single-family residence, the attorney's telling the board members they could be individually liable, too, if we get, they get sued, so they approved it. And I think there were seven members that got approved, four to three, or something like that. Nobody wanted it, everybody knew it was gonna be an event house, but they were already in two other legal disputes, and they didn't want a third, especially one that their attorney said, "You're not gonna win it."
Is there a restriction for commercial development within your community?
There were, uh, commercial developments were in the front.
For, for example, in our, in our community, you can't operate a business that's in the covenants, you cannot operate a, I don't care if it's Mary Kay.
Yeah.
Legally, you're not allowed to operate a business within our community. Whether or not the board chooses to enforce that regulation is up to the board.
Right.
So, at that point, your, your recourse would be to go to the board and say, "Here it is in black and white, you as a resident of that community have a right to sue the board if they don't uphold the covenants." If the covenants say, "You are not allowed to operate a business within this community," and they're operating a business, and you can prove that, and the board takes no action, you can file a complaint against the board and sue the board.
I agree.
That's how we...
I agree. Our covenants say, "Single-family residential use only." Single-family residential. Then, the developer, Mickey Hayes and Kitty Hawk Land Company, had two zones for commercial, the front, where Harris Teeter and all that information, the clubhouse is, and then at the south entrance, okay, where, um, the visitor's center is, okay? Those were the only two, two commercial zones. Everything else is residential, unless it's part of the golf course, so. But these, the board members, they were looking out for their own good, and were advised by the attorney, you know, "Hey, you could be her, personally liable for this."
Yeah, they, they have insurance against that, they can't be held personally liable.
Well, that's, that's the word I got. I'm, I'm just passing on the information.
Thank you.
But, we want, we're up...
The other thing is, if you say, "Well, it's a commercial operation in our development," I mean, they're really just renting it through the real estate company.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's...
They're renting it like you would rent a four-bedroom house.
Lot, lot of neighborhoods have that restrictive covenant, although that's not what we're talking about tonight, about not having a business, um, but it's difficult to say you can't rent your house. Um, and that, there again, we're looking at, at use, not the structure, because the structure of that house is legally a single-family dwelling, if you just look at the structure. Yes, it's big, yes, it has a lot of bedrooms, but it's America. I mean, you know, what, what if whoever, Shaquille O'Neal, said, "I want to build a thirty-bedroom house in Corolla," and right now it's legal to do that? So, we're not talking about the house, we're not talking about it being a big house, we're not, it's the use of it. It's the use of it. Uh, I, I mean, I, I don't want to get into, you know, so-and-so's got a great big house, and, you know, I don't... you know, I don't like them. It's that we're talking about the use of it. Or is this a single family home uh, that that's being rented weekly like thousands of other houses in in Darren, Currytuck County? And at what point does it transition from a weekly rental into more of a commercial use? What's that criteria? And it's so hard to define. And I think that's why the other municipalities have just went with size of house. Because that by default, if you're going to have a wedding party, you're probably not going to want a six bedroom house unless you don't have many friends. So that that's that's how they've handled it. It it's it's a big, it's 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 a big issue. I I think I'd like to see a list of the the concerns, we've heard a lot of them, and and maybe a list of objective standards. We know size is 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 probably the most straightforward one. And and what else? Lot width, lot size.
Setbacks?
Ratio setbacks.
Ratio of housed a lot.
Now, keep, I mean, this being a countywide thing, you know, loo- looking at setbacks, then are we going to change the setbacks in your neighborhood or the setbacks?
What I mean by setbacks is if if the house is in excess of a certain size, it has to be a certain distance from the neighbor's house.
That's that would be a measurable, measurable standard. Yeah, and and that's where we need some counsel from the the building code as well. I think that's part of what what came up today. You know, if you've got a residential permit, how much, how many commercial features, commercial construction features can be required? It's again, it's more informa-, we need more information.
I mean, the fact that this place is already existing and and operating, there's no time limitation on this. We don't have, I mean, we've already ruled on one that's being built. So, I mean, potentially, we could table this and get some more information and kind of revisit it next month.
Sure.
I have some interesting numbers for you guys. I had asked the staff to come up with uh, some numbers about the total amount of uh, homes that are a certain square footage. And since two thousand and five until now, there were two hundred and twenty building permits issued for homes between five thousand and ninety-nine ninety-nine square feet. There was twenty-one homes between ten thousand and fourteen ninety-nine nine. Two fifteen thousand square feet to nineteen nine 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 square feet. And four at twenty thousand square feet or greater.
In that sense?
Since two thousand and five.
In Currytuck County?
And just on the beach strand.
Okay.
And currently, there are thirteen active building permits that have not had a C O issued. And of those thirteen, seven of them are under ten thousand square feet. Four of them are between ten and fifteen. One of them is between fifteen and twenty, and one of the other ones is over twenty thousand square feet. Just to give you an idea of how many you're talking about. If this were to come to fruition of the current writing, that many at least would have to be retrofitted to to work.
That's uh, what's the number in Nags Head's square footage?
Five thousand.
Yeah, how many are over five thousand?
Two, yeah, two hundred and twenty, forty-two, forty-seven, two hundred and forty-seven.
Since two thousand and five.
Right, since two thousand and five.
Well, we we're talking about a a unique area as well. I mean, I don't want to overlook either that Nags Head has hotels, Duck has hotel, you know, there there's more commercial use in those areas.
It is.
Um, so are we going to say, let's do smaller houses in Corolla, but allow more commercial use so that we can build hotels? Because now we're not going to be able to have rooms for the people that want to come visit the beach. It's it's more complicated than what are we going to do with this one house on this one lot? It's the whole area. Part of why those big houses are in demand is because it's such limited commercial use there. So we're going to say, okay, now we can only do small houses plus no more commercial use. Or we're going to designate a larger commercial area uh, to invite another hotel because now we've limited the size of houses. We got to be longer lo- longer view than, you know, we just don't want big houses. I agree with the life safety issues. And we got to consider all this, but we've also got to consider why these big houses are in such demand. Those other municipalities, for the most part, they have hotels, they have other places you can stay. Corolla doesn't.
And these other places, I don't think your lot sizes, if you're comparing apples to apples.
Right, smaller lots.
You got smaller lots, smaller houses.
Mm-hmm.
I I agree with the safety issues, but I'd rather see something like that building. I wouldn't monstrosities more commercial hotels down there.
Right.
My opinion, but
Yeah.
In the four wheel drive section, only ten acre parcel, if you got a big home, I, you know, it's not comparing it with Nags Head, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
That that's right. The character of the area is different. So we we got to caution ourselves about jumping right to when Nags Head does this, so let's do this too, because it works for them, where they've got how how many hundreds and hundreds of hotel rooms there as well? Where, you know, how many, how many hotel rooms are in in Corolla? And the fact is, the demand's there and we want to be inviting the people, come visit our, visit our beaches and all. So it's, you know, something we got to balance. Smaller houses and and more hotels, or or how can we tie in, legally tie in required safety features for larger homes? If we're going to cap the size of homes, what's that cap? So it's it's more to think about than than I can decide tonight on, you know. I couldn't vote on anything tonight myself.
Water too, which I mean, you put these down, I'm not well in in North One, Raney Rock, two weeks ago. Uh, I'm like, I have two neighbors, you know, but I mean, you're talking about some people that are taking some water out of the ground.
Right.
Right next to other folks.
That's right.
Water in the big, big footprints.
Got to look look at amenities and and drainage plants.
Water for the crowd up there, you know, that municipal system.
The other thing, and the fires last weekend are an example of it, in even the Brenly Building that burned and then five other houses uh, significantly caught fire. Two, two were very severely damaged. It just happened that nobody was in those five houses. But you could have had multiple houses with multiple deaths involved in it, even when one commercial building went up. And this is part of what Mrs. Long is saying also, when you're talking about a ten foot setback, you know, to to your size house of two or three thousand feet, and you know, you're talking about twenty feet total from that big uh, extraordinarily big house next to yours, and something goes wrong and burns, it's going to take her house, if the wind's blowing the right way. And that's exactly what happened this weekend. The one house caught fire, instantly caught the other house on fire. The same way um, in Pine Island, um, less than two years ago. You had two houses that instantly caught fire, and um, I don't know whether the third one was actually involved or not, but it destroyed too. And, you know, and so they're so close packed together, and you talk about Pine Island being million dollar, two million dollar houses. And you haven't got breathing room between them. So, I mean, I think that's part of where the county needs to look at house size compared to lot size. And, you know, vary the the, uh, you know, have standards that says if your house is so big, you've got to have more setback on the on the two sides. You know, side setbacks as well as front and back setbacks.
Mm-hmm. They've they've got coverage requirements that was intended to, you know, take care of at least part of that issue. But then, I guess, when you get into multiple levels.
But then when you go like this with your lot, you know, the hundred and thirty by a thousand square feet, I mean, a thousand feet deep, that that throws it out when you're, you know, doing lot coverage size.
Right.
So, you know, there's there's some practicality to it. Um, and, you know, the part of the thing with the whole off-road area where we have uh, two of these huge houses that are now either under construction or or built, we have very, very poor fire coverage. We have four wheel drive coverage, and you're talking about a house going up, and you're talking about the beach being flooded. You can't get to that house. You know? So that the closer they are together, the more potential danger it is.
And that that's another, just a unique aspect of of our areas. We've got big houses and and a lot of people, especially in the summer, that are that are staying in areas where no paved roads and no utilities really. So.
And they love it.
Yes, they do. Yes, they do. And and that's a good thing. That's a good thing.
Well, personally, I don't think, I'm, I agree with you, John. I couldn't vote on anything anybody presented this night. There's too much to consider. I mean, you could, there's a gazillion ways it could go. And each one of them will be correct in their own little content, but yet again, not overall a good idea for everything. It's a lot to think about. It's a lot. I think we need more information from the staff and Lord knows whoever, I don't know this building code council from nothing, but
Well, Bill Noons, the the chief building inspector, um, I mean, may maybe he could. I know we're talking about zoning, but the building code certainly ties in.
We could have Bill come in and talk about some things. I think that's fine. But practically, you know, you're not going to embed building code into the zoning code. That's probably not going to be legal. So we're going to be really limited in like construction life safety features. I think trying to do that through the zoning code, our attorney probably would advise us not to do that, so.
I mean, the the building code is is a is a funny thing. I guess they're the ones that interpreted, ma- made the interpretation today. I mean, I, and I'm a builder, by the way. I mean, if we build a house and a stair nosing is a sixteenth of an inch off, we don't get a C O. However, you can see the interpretation that was made today, you know, fifty people in a house and then no exit signs is okay though. So it's a complicated issue, complicated issue. We want to make sure we've got information from anybody that 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 can contribute to it meaningfully before we proceed, you know, go further with it.
And Mr. Chairman, what I what I would tell you and the board tonight is you you can, yeah, so you you can have a choice tonight. You you can take on part of this amendment request and see if you can dive into some of these issues and 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 maybe when it goes to the board of commissioners, you can include that as part of your recommendation, or at least as part of your analysis. I think that's appropriate. Um, or or you can send it on to the board of commissioners and and kind of see what they want to do. Neither ways, right or wrong, it's just something that you you guys want to consider, so. Because I don't, now, I'll say this in all fairness, I don't know where the boards at on this, so.
You mean, send it to them as it is without any action?
Well, I think you have to take an action, so, I mean, I guess what I'm
Action is, we can take an action?
Well, you would recommend denial. I mean, if you feel like it's not a good amendment, you, so I mean, and and Mr. Knock may, I don't, he may not want to spend a month talking to the planning board again. I don't know what his, what his preference is. I said the planning board tonight, they they can
Three choices.
Table this, take some time to to develop alternatives to your text amendment or other ways to address this, and send it on to the board of commissioners. I don't know what the board of commissioners will do with that, or the planning board could make a recommendation and move it forward with that recommendation. But then I said, I'm not even sure what you want to do, Mr. Knock. You you may not want to come back in a month from now to the planning board.
I'm open for any suggestions from you all, and if you want to table it. Does it automatically have to come up in front of the uh, board of commissioners at the next meeting?
If we take action, it would move forward.
Now, the planning board can, the actual planning board can table this twice. So the planning board can spend two months with your request before they have to move it on.
If you all feel like it needs reviewing, it's an issue that needs to be figured out, okay? And one of my concerns, and I hope it doesn't happen, it's on the outer banks now, but can be over here on the ma- in the mainland anytime possible. So just because you live over here, doesn't mean someone can't buy a beautiful five acre lot right on the sound on this side. Have an old house there, put up a big pavilion, and you all have an event house over on this side of the sound. So it can happen to you. It's started and you can see the domino effect. So let's take our time, let's work it out. And I'm not saying my change is perfect. But we have an issue we got to address. They are not using it as a single family resident. They're not, all have the same name, they're staying in at that house. There, a lot of people come into that house and they don't know anybody because it's a wedding party. The people from out of
Well, and 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 that's what we've got to work through because the the house structure itself right now is a legal, single family dwelling. As far as building code is concerned, far zoning is concerned, take the use out. It is a legal, single family dwelling. And then from there, it's legal to rent that house for a week. Still, we're fine.
Right.
From there, we get into the event house type stuff where there's uh, weddings and and parking issues and occupancy issues. Then how do we police use? And, you know, we're just kind of going through that. And I'm, you know, you've got the ball rolling with this and myself. I mean, I I I would think table it and and get some more information, either that or deny this with direction to staff to come up with a list of of more objective standards when it comes to the board of commissioners. If you and I hurry to get it to the commissioners, but that's, that's where I'm at with it.
I'm up for any options, and if you want to table it and ask the staff to give you some more options available, that's fine with me. Uh, we know there's two or three more weddings planned, and I'll take pictures to send over to you all because
We we know it's happening. I mean, I, we're we're trying to get it to where, you know, look at it logically. We know it's happening. We we know the house is legal, single family. We know it's legal to rent. From there, what uses are causing the issues? And and it is the special events, because there's parking issues, because there's noise issues. So are we going to police that activity, or are we going to regulate it with the size of the house, which some of the other communities do? However, limit the size of the house, do we all of a sudden get a bunch of rezoning requests because we're going to build hotels now?
Yeah.
So we got to think about it in the whole big picture. Uh, the character of that area is different. It's unique. That's why we've got unique issues to deal with and, you know, hopefully we'll handle them wisely.
Well, you know, back in two thousand and ten, the board of commissioners had this issue about setting limits. So you know, giving them another, hey, we want to limit the size, I'm not sure they're going to buy into that. They already turned it down in two thousand and ten. They all apparently want these things.
We we make recommendations. We make recommendations. We're not talking about what, I'm not talking about what the commissioners want.
Yeah, right.
This board gives recommendations to the commissioners and then they vote. We're not in any way trying to vote for them or we don't know how they want us to feel. That doesn't really matter either.
Okay.
We give our recommendations to them and then they vote.
Independently.
Independently. That's exactly right. I mean, personally, I can tell you myself, I've been chairman on this board since January, and I've not talked to one commissioner since.
I don't even want to know how they feel.
So we are independent um, of them.
I bet with like, you know, table on this at least once, we could come up with something that's maybe a little more palatable than the original.
Something with objective standards.
Like we got to go backwards on this and go forwards on this, but maybe we start to make something more valuable to both the the folks that are running these and building these homes and then the residents around it so that, you know, it'll, it can make it. Because right now, I I'm concerned, this this wouldn't make it, you know, just because it's it's a little bit sort of stringent.
It is.
It's very harsh.
Because it's, it's got such a wide impact.
It's a wide impact, it's it's subjective, and then the whole going back is would be tough, tough, tough.
Very costly.
Susan. Don't worry, it's late. Do you have any idea about our agenda for next time? Is it heavy?
For the one in September?
Yes, ma'am.
We actually only have one case going in September at this time.
Thank you. May I make a motion?
Please do.
I move that we table this item, P B fifteen dash eleven until our September meeting, which would give us all the time to investigate and think and talk, and give the planning staff some extra time to advise us and find out what's going on in other areas that might be more applicable to this sensitive area that we have over there.
And perhaps have some other
And perhaps have some other parties' inputs, including the Commissioners.
Yes, anybody that they think is necessary to come, whether it's a lawyer, whether it's the, uh, building inspector or whoever, we need all the information we can get.
Commissioner recommendations.
Ben, are we, are we legally able to discuss this outside of this forum?
Yes.
The email and et cetera?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great.
My second to motion.
All right, we have a, a, a motion to table it, and over the next month, acquire information so that we can come back and, um, discuss it logically, and we have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, and that's all, new business, any announcements? Anybody's birthday or anything like that? Anybody pregnant?
God!
I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
I'm not the only woman in the room. I'm probably the least likely one to be pregnant.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor, aye, opposed?
Are you really?